Yes.
Yes, I do have that on the agenda. Let's forget that last one.
All right. Bartholomew?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Fowler?
Excellent.
Snow? Care?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Rossa?
Here.
President Poznanski?
Here.
We have six present.
So let's move into the first item we were talking about in our special meeting. Is the possible change to the water rates of specifically the meter differences between three quarter, five eighths, three quarters, and one inch. So I sent the question to Mr. Kesar, asking him to reevaluate those numbers. When she sent this table back, five eighths, this is the current that we have up here. Currently, five eighths and three quarters are the same at $50, and the one inch is 125. The $50 for the five eighths and three quarters is actually the rate for five eighths. So I asked him to redo that, to make it three quarters, which would then adjust the other rate. So that's where you have your second, the option there that you have on your page, which still isn't quite what I was looking for. So now you have specifically five eighths, three quarters, and one inch. We still would like three quarters and five eighths to be the same, however, at the price of three quarters, not at the price of five eighths. So those are adjusted a bit there. To be, those are the little bit cost of those. Go ahead.
Um, we do have to approve of the agenda?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I make a motion to approve the special meeting agenda for April 24.
Second. All in favor of approving the agenda as is?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed?
Thank you.
Were you, sorry, good now?
Yes.
So those are where those rates sit. So we still have time technically. It would be a rush to, it would be a rush as much as it would just be the legwork for cabinet and the office staff to switch it out, but there's still time.
I think it makes sense to go with the exact charge for what meter individuals have instead of combining the two of them to spread the cost out.
Well, the combination is because I don't have a little breakdown of how many five eighths we have, but it's very small. We don't necessarily want people, we want it between the three quarters and the one inch. That's what services most of the houses and the water. So for everyone to go back to five eighths, does, it's gonna, it's gonna end up with issues. So that's where...
But we're not giving out five eighths meters anymore, are we?
No.
So until they switch out, they pay their 45, and when they get a three quarter, they switch to the 67.
Yeah.
So this is where we're at. If we wanted to adjust it currently with these rates, I would ask that we do it tonight so that the staff would have the most time to enter those changes into the system for the first bill.
How were the rates developed?
With the rate study.
The rate study?
Study that we did, this council approved back...
July 2022.
Yeah, but this, we did a study back before...
Oh, yeah, before them.
So the rates do need to be redone. This is gonna be something that we do annually. So as soon as we essentially put this into effect, we need to reassess and then get going on what we will need to adjust for next year. We have many residents asking us to reassess before next year. They would like us to actually put a pause right now and reassess currently, but given how far we've come and already put off, these rates aren't effective. When we made that stop, that pause in December for the six months, we put these to be in effect after that six months. So they automatically go in. That's where, that's where we're at.
For the next, the next cycle, right?
Well, indefinitely until, as the ordinance says, is updated from time to time by the council.
So I, I don't know. Where else seems, I'd like the second option. We'll call it the standard rate or standard charge.
For meters as is.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, there'll be...
Is there an option two?
The standard rate for meters as is.
If I may, on our agenda, just to approve, we had public comment before discussing this.
We can, we can probably discuss it. Do you have a second at least?
I have a second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Is there possibly make public comment on this right now? All right. I know, I'm sorry if it's out of term, but I just, we did have a conversation earlier today with the president, and I do think that it would be helpful to hear some, some commentary on behalf of some of the residents today. First, good evening, Franco Filino. I was here last Monday, spoke about the water issue. Myself, Mr. Kaufman, and Dave Thomas met with President Poznanski and Catherine Trapp earlier to discuss the water billing rate. We trust you guys, you're gonna communicate all our concerns that we talked about today, but I'd just like to reiterate a couple of key factors that, that we found out, just to look more deeply. The proposed billing structure that led to the vote last year is woefully flawed. There is key information in there that warps this entire situation. And to propose anything, levy anything out of the village that's based on the analysis that was done by Mr.?
Municipal analytics.
Okay.
Municipal analytics.
Municipal analytics. It's just, it's, the foundation is extremely weak there. So to build anything on that is, is gonna cause problems in the future. The AWWA standard ratios here are, there really should be little to no variance as you, in the residential side of this, as you go from five eighths all the way down to the six inch meter, there, this is not where we capture, we should be trying to capture the additional costs that need to be collected to properly maintain the infrastructure of our water system. The costs should be collected in the variable portion of the bill, i.e., what am I actually using and what am I putting into the sewage system? So whatever demand I'm actually asking for, or asking for, from the system, that is where the cost should be associated. If we try to go ahead and say, we're gonna charge a resident who has a one inch meter $112.50 per quarter, all that is going to incentivize is somebody like me saying, I would like a $45, a five eighths meter put in my house as soon as possible. I know I would bear the brunt of that cost, but get it done, please, because over the course of a year, I'm probably gonna pay back all those costs. And it's gonna make the village essentially lose out on the costs that we're trying to collect in the long term. So in essence, over time, this is not going to achieve the effect that we are trying to attain with these standard ratios. So again, I know we're trying, I know this is like open-heart surgery, and this has been an ongoing discussion for the last year or so, but I really would hope that we could look at this with greater specificity and come to the conclusion that there really should be no variance here whatsoever in the standard ratios, and all the variance should be on the actual usage of the resident. Did I mention anything? Okay. All right. Thank you.
So going forward, we will address all these questions with our, Mr. Kesar, municipal analytics to see, to address them, because I don't know if that was taken into account. We especially, when this was done, had four as a user. So it needs to be, but it's gonna be an annual thing, and it needs to be redone and looked at anyways.
Trustee Parker, can I have you repeat the motion, please? I got most of them.
Motion to go with the option two, the standard rate for meters as is.
Thank you. What is that? What is the standard rate?
Well, as you see up, up here. Before, we were looking at something that combined the two smaller meter sizes to, I guess, balance a cost. And this just puts a cost individually per meter.
For the actual size. So the five eighths and three quarters were $50, and the one inch was 125. So this is a rate structure where this, they are, the meters are the size for what the meter is. The cost is for the size.
Megan, how did we come about that we're not putting in the five eighths meters anymore? Like, nope. That's not an ordinance or a...
I didn't have to answer. Timmy answered it before, and I can't remember the...
Is it building standard today?
I think it's standard. More of the standard, five, three quarter, I think, is pretty much the smallest coming in now.
And given the usage of homes and how much demand, 100 years ago, you had one bath, there was just a different supply. But that's a two question, I'm not, I didn't know.
So last, end of last year, we gave ourselves, in December, we gave ourselves another six month period, and we kind of told the public that we would have this done in six months. But from what I'm hearing is that maybe we should change that decision to, well, I know we have a motion on the table, and we'll get through that, but maybe we should hear what he's saying, look things over again, maybe get it done in one more billing. I think, I think the new rate structure is already set to go into place regardless of what we do here. This is just adjusting the cost associated with each meter, like your base fee for whatever size meter you have. So regardless of what happens, correct me if I'm wrong, it's going into place. It's gonna happen. Rates are gonna change. We definitely maybe should look at it.
I think we should continue.
Look at it.
For sure.
Yeah.
So that it makes sense.
We're not gonna stop anything that's already going.
No, and that's even in the study. We have, this is something we have to reassess annually, which means yearly. So yes, I'm gonna, I, we met this afternoon, I plan to address the questions with Mr. Kesar and see where we go. And if we need to reassess before the one year, I can bring it before you guys, and you can choose to do that. Absolutely. Like we said, our, our residents are number one. I mean, this is what we...
Why can't you be left the way it is now until you reassess it? I mean, I'm gonna go from, one sixty-eight, forty, up to close to $300.
Well, and then you would be left without the option, you would be paying your sewer with your irrigation all summer. This isn't gonna be something that we're gonna be able to turn around in a month. We're gonna need probably, at least the, the next cycle, it would be another three months, which would get you into your irrigation time, which would irrigate, you would need to be paying the sewer on your irrigation. Part of all of this was to get to the point where you didn't have to pay sewer on your irrigation.
I don't have the urge with the complex.
The condos.
Yeah, that, that's a whole different story. That was handled, what I've done by the village, that doesn't have a thing to do with me. I had it set back in my condo.
Right. What I'm saying is it wouldn't, we, at this point, in putting in currently what we have, the irrigation just at the condo, they're just getting the water. It would no longer be paying for also sewer.
Right.
But if we had to put a pause on this to continue the current rate, that's not in the current rate. So then, this next cycle, starting into the irrigation season, we would also have sewer on the irrigation, on the water irrigation. Do we have any more discussion? If we're gonna pause it, we have to, I would highly suggest it's for a whole cycle. We're not gonna need a rate in the middle of a cycle, that's just very confusing to all of the village. Do you want to?
There's a motion.
We have a motion on the floor right now.
All of them?
Parker?
Yes.
Rossa?
Yes.
Bartholomew?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Care?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
President Poznanski?
Yes.
Motion Care, six zero, to adopt option two.
As soon as I get an answer back from Mr. Kesar, we had, I guess another thing to bring up would be if we wanted to go with a different company, or continue with this one, or go out with, to RFP. Did we go out to RFP for the this one?
We did.
Okay.
We did.
How long, how long is that contract?
Well, we've...
I thought it was just for that one time.
But we are in agreement with him and answering his basis for the current changes right now, to answer our kind of questions before the rollout.
But going forward after that, we can...
I believe so. It was just strictly for the study.
If we want to.
And all questions that are taken, go ahead.
Okay.
I agree. We probably should look at, just take it up and dive into it, see what maybe another company comes back with and see. Because, you know, this, it doesn't just affect you, it affects me and all of us up here too, so.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so I, it's now, I make this decision very lightly. You know, it's a, I have a one inch meter, and it, it flows some water, but, you know, the cost is, yeah, so definitely let's look at it.
But can I ask a quick question? We have our accountants here tonight. Our, basically, your budget that we are working on is based on this water study, so that is gonna reconstruct our entire water and sewer budget that we are supposed to be reviewing tonight if we do go out for a bit and ask for another study that is gonna put a delay and a pause on doing our budget and recalculating everything. Is that correct?
I mean, it's a different, we'd have to, in total, you need the same amount of money, no matter whether it's coming in, schedule one, two, three, or four, or five. It's just gonna be a balancing act of who pays what. But in sum total, it should generate the same dollars. So I wouldn't let it hold up the, the budget process.
Well, and I'm talking if we don't go with any of the current options right now, we just keep it as is while we figure this out with...
With the lower variable.
With the lower variable rate, with the minimum, and all of that.
Yes, the revenue will not come in as currently proposed.
Okay, so that's gonna undo our budget for, we could be crunching some numbers again.
More number crunching, but you can always amend after. So I, I just wouldn't let anything hold up the process of the budget.
Just wanted to be...
Do what you need to do for the rates to make sure it won't satisfy, but keep the budget going, and it can always be amended.
Okay. So just wanted to let the board know that doing, if any other future votes in regards to this, is going to affect other things, not just the water bills. It's gonna affect some flow of business in the village, as we are coming up on our June 30 deadline to have a complete budget.
We're doing good, though. We're headed to schedule this year. So you better mind. Okay, moving into the second item, I don't have a, because, um, I'm pretty busy donating property, what, an option, or a proposal. Thanks for coming to my guy.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, Mr. Poznanski? I mean, you can stand up, or you can stand there, and there's no...
Okay. My name is Joshua Zahalski. I'm in. Hello. Been roaming residence all my whole life. I used to live in the house right across the street from the airport, the yellow house there. Since I've sold the house, I now live in Wakeville. So this, that you see in blue, used to be part of my backyard, but being I don't need it anymore, and I don't live there anymore, the village council was very gracious in helping me push my annexation through, having part of the, part of the village down. And so, thought process was, the village could use this piece of property, I'd like to donate to the village. You see it red there, that's owned by the state of Michigan now, among this, which segment, but I can get ahold of the right people for, because I bought, they bought that property, it was a navigation easement, you can't build anything tall there. They donated property, that, I'm thinking, you can't build anything there either, it's all floodplain, but it's all mowed, great place for crispy golf, fishing, kids, it's, don't quote me, I'm guessing it's around seven acres, I'm not exactly sure. I gotta appraise, and of course, I couldn't finally praise it when I walked home to the door this evening. But up on top there, it's all sandy ground, you know, the state would let you do it, you know, might have to throw some, some stone down to make a parking lot, but I think it'd be great for the thing. You can barely see the, kind of on the south side, you see a ridge, that's an old mill race, because there used to be a Christian mill up on top of the hill where that, in the red there. So that I, when I cleaned it all up, I left the mill race, so they went, what is this thing? So it's kind of cool piece of property that it was, because the mill race, right about the point way up in here, the mill race used to go all the way from there, so we'd collect the water from there, and then they would, the paddle wheels down here, and they'd pick up the, the generation horsepower, whatever you call it, energy from the water for the Christian mill. But it's a, it's a cool piece of property, if anybody would like to go out and walk it with me, I'd be happy to meet you out there, take a stroll, but it's, you'll like it. It's quiet down there because you're below the road, and you don't, you know, you heard the big trucks, but I don't have those anymore either. But, I don't know, it's kind of a cool piece of property, and I thought I'd offer to people, and so we talked about it, and...
Is there, would there be access off of, off your road there?
Off of this mile, Chesway?
Yeah.
No.
There won't be.
No.
Is it everything north of 32 mile, or just less?
Yeah, everything, this, inside this blue.
Is, is there access to...
Just inside this area?
Just inside the blue, and you would access it from this lot here. This is, this is, this is a cemetery.
Okay.
That's a cemetery, and this is a vacant lot, and this is all the thing here.
So we could put in, off of...
Can you access it here?
Yeah, you'd access it, you'd probably access, really right about here.
Well, that's the state land, but is there enough...
Uh, no, you, that's, no, it's like really steep. You'd have to access it from the state land.
So we'd have to get permission.
So I could, the guy's name's Mike Trout, from the, Air Mike Michigan Air Nights, he's the one that helped me with the deal.
Yeah.
That's who I negotiated the thing with, so. But I have his information, and I'd be happy to call for you and see, but it's basically use it just as a parking lot, you know? And it's a, boom, nice. But again, you can't build anything down there because it's floodplain.
I would imagine if we did there, we'd have to maybe build stairs to go down?
Um, stairs are ramped, you went, you know, yeah, you, it's not, it's not, where I'd propose you'd go down, you know, ramped those down there a lot of times, but it's, you can walk down it, but it's...
Any, any chance on Chesway? I don't know who...
No, there's, that's owned by the associates, because it's a condo, but though, there's no access to it. The bridge is open, there's a bridge here, but the bridge belongs to one of the, I sold this building, he owns the bridge, but no, there's no access there.
Right, but I mean, have you ever talked to them about allowing you access through there, or no?
There'd be no parking there. You'd have to get across. And then, that's an act of, you cross it.
Cleveland.
Yeah. So that, that bridge went in there in the seventies, these were gone, none of the DQ way up.
Our insurance would love that.
Say what?
I said, I'm sure our insurance would love that.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, I mean, my first thought is we need to see what the state would say could, because if they won't give us that access, and that's a landlocked kind of portion, how would we, our people be there?
If you like, I can call the state, and, you know, see what he's got to say, and hey, the village thinks about it, and then you might move up. Because they gotta mow it and keep the trees down anyways, because of the airport, so, you know, you're doing them a favor.
Well, and if that's it, if you also would like to intervene, then let's continue looking into it.
How many's want to walk it?
Who's actually mowing it?
Uh, I'm, I still...
Okay. Which we would then...
I mean, when I lived there, I mowed it, it was like a golf course, like that thing.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's a cool piece.
You know, we drive by it all the time, and I see it flood, I've never actually really looked at it to look at it.
Right.
So how, tell me about the, like flooding in there and what happens and...
Once in a while, we haven't had one that came above the banks in about 25 years.
The creek bank?
The creek bank, yeah. It's, I mean, it hasn't come over the banks, and, la, 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 la. Because Powell Road is kind of a choke, so the culvert under Powell Road holds back all the water, so it's kind of your pipe thing, it's kind of like you got three quarter inch pipe going into a four inch pipe. So the Powell Road holds the water back, and then once it goes underneath Powell Road, you know, there's less flood, it just doesn't have the volume to... But when I was a kid, before they put their culvert in there, this was before most of your times, it would flood, but it hasn't flooded, years and years and years and years and years. And what it does, if it floods, it might be up for half a day.
Well, I think if the council's interested, then we continue to look into it and see...
If anybody wanted to call, my, your cell phone, you can call me, it's 586. I don't wanna see it on any bathroom walls.
You, you wanna email us? Because, I don't know if this is gonna, well, you don't have cameras here anyway.
I also have this contact information.
Yeah.
Would you prefer to do it as a group, field trip, or... You cannot, don't...
You don't have a vehicle to take me.
That's the whole of meetings, I find.
I'm free.
It's a horse shop.
No more than two, if we have the time, please.
Yeah, I driven down Chesway and kind of looked at it from that side to see a little better.
Okay. Or you can turn along the thing, but the, the rush that's on the thing now, got these thorns a lot like this, so if you stop there, pay attention. But we'd park on Chesway side, and we'll just walk across the bridge, walk across there, so.
So did you know the Harolds?
Pardon me?
Did you know the Harolds that lived down the street?
Yes. Okay. Leslie?
When we first moved to Romeo, we, we moved into that house directly across the street.
Oh, okay.
Close to the road.
Right.
So I remember hanging out back in there, and it did used to flood years ago.
Now there it does, because you've got, you've got two branches, you've got the north branch, you're coming, and then you've got east pond, they were down.
Okay.
Okay? You can go, I'll, sure, look, Trout, Trout, Trot, whatever it is, and then I will be with you.
Okay.
But I'll put a call in. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Was that, I never specially...
Yes, you have to adjourn this one, please.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
And 722? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn, special.
Any opposed? None opposed? Okay. Let's say 723, we move into our by bill. This time, everybody has same information?
We have to redo it, call it over, and talk through all that again?
Yes. Do we need to pledge again?
You know, hands up here, tea for the agenda.
Do with the agenda, so let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get approval of the agenda? Go ahead, call roll.
Yep. Bartholomew?
Here.
Edwards?
Here.
Fowler? Care?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Rossa?
Here.
President Poznanski?
Here.
You have six present?
Can we get an approval of the agenda as is?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as is. Support?
Take one.
Support by Bartholomew. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed? Do we have any public comment? Nope? Any public comment? Okay, first, we're gonna start with, we had some unfinished business, we got some information. Julie provided us, the garden, I'll need to bring it right away. The rubbish funds, as we talked about it last time. So she wanted to get us this information so that going forward we could adjust as needed, walking through there. So you guys have all the information that's up there, this is just for our audience. Um, so we had the two pages, the second one has the totals on it for us. Um, where you can see collected in whole is three seventy-eight, nine fifty-eight change. Um, two oh five in change comes from residential and one seventy-three in change comes from business. So that's the total breakdown of that. That is how we get to. So I didn't know, or we don't know how you would like us to plan going forward. Um, again, you can always make the adjustments. What, do you see what?
Oh, oh, yeah, no, I'm here, okay.
So how, how do we get to that for the business, like, is there a rate that they're charged for square foot or?
No, they tax it as business and that's how they're, that's how they're.
And the value has the same tax? Or is, does it fluctuate?
No, they have the same mill as their tax has.
Okay, all right, that's.
It's just the other value, but it's gonna be, their taxable value is gonna be different than a house.
Okay. So we wanted to bring that to you in consideration of going forward with how we would and looking at, um, going out for baby share and what we would want, um.
So this, part number one, this was to include the central business district into the pickup. If they can have a wheelie cart or a small cart garbage, but then it still leaves out the rest of the businesses and the industrial that are still paying into this, correct?
This is nothing projected, this is literally as it, this is what is being paid currently.
Oh, I thought this was a change.
No.
No, 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 no.
I'm explaining to you how you, we get to the money we get to.
Okay, I see.
And business includes the industrial, right? I don't know.
No, I don't think so. I mean, just take care of themselves.
So they're, they're excluded from paying into that?
They're not excluded for paying.
So then you paid to that.
Yeah.
So they would be included in that business portion or the residential portion? Do we know how the, um, do you know how, the numbers that were pulled?
I thought they paid for the.
Caroline, yes, unfortunately Caroline.
So, 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 everyone pays into the, into the rubbish one, yeah.
Which is what a lot of businesses complain about.
It's like the cemetery, we're not there, but we all pay for it. They pay for it, you're not getting it.
We did some, right?
Well, the C M D gets something, but it's not general garbage pickup like we receive at our home.
Oh, well, some do, I'm pretty sure.
A couple do. So does the business, that's businesses and industrial make up that one seventy-three?
Uh, data can answer, Caroline pulled that from her, um, tax records and I don't know what parameters she put on outside of business, did she put business and industrial or just business, I cannot answer that. She is out of the office for any treasurer's conference.
Okay, so it's just something, we've got a little bit more information there, I wanted to give it to you guys, something going forward, we can see what we have, how it's, um, split up going into our R F T for what we're gonna need to which is what we currently pay, what is our contract that?
It was, it goes up incrementally every year and, um, well, what do you mean, what do we pay, would we pay monthly or yearly or?
Contract as a whole, save for this year.
God, what is it, it's like twenty-nine thousand a month? Well, that was there. So the high twenty-thousand's a month.
It's not just twenty-one-five. I was trying to think, so if we cut everybody out and just did the residential, who is served with the two oh five cover it is kind of? But I don't know that you can just cut anybody out with the way that the mill is or that it's put out there.
Two oh five, I don't think that would cover it all.
I don't even know if that's an option. We'd have to.
Are we up to twenty-five thousand a year? It's a month.
Right now, we're paying twenty-one-five a month.
Oh, it is twenty-one-five, okay. So twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars a month is our contract and services with them. Times twelve.
When's that contract done?
October thirty-first. Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand we would take, what we do pay here right now. And that is within our contract and incremental, um, adjustments over the years, so.
Which is right now, and I don't see that going down.
Correct, so our, our new contract is only gonna keep going up.
Okay, just keeping that in mind as we go forward. Any more discussion questions? Let's move into our technical project.
Oh, can I, paper's on it? Okay, also, what you have in front of you, I wanted to point out in the green and the blue paper. These are budget notes of when I had discussions with Tim for D P W and Al of wastewater. Of items that they let me know of as, that would impact the upcoming budget. As far as cost increases, items that they're in need of, items that I don't know if, um, they're looking at to do as a projected project. So you guys had asked, um, last time for budget notes, these are the budget notes that I took upon these meetings and I do have one for the police department, for tomorrow also. So if you have any questions, I know neither one of the supervisors are here, I'll do my best to answer it based on the conversations that I already had with them.
Thank you. And then you did have notes put into your budget in front of you. So if something was changed, increased, whatnot, things we know, which we have for you. Should we go line by line together or? Um, I don't know, I thought that you said, given, um, you didn't want to go line by line, if we put in the notes that you would just, so what would you like? You'd like me to read every single line? Anyone have a preference, if we go line by line or just?
Any questions or items you wanna review for that date?
I mean, this first one, the four ninety, right, is that, looks like it's been combined somewhere else? So were you covering anything in that or?
Yeah, that's now five ninety. Wastewater system.
Yeah, the first two looks like they would combine with someone else in four ninety-seven. So sort of combined.
The idea would be that by the end of the current fiscal year, whatever's left in four ninety would be moved to five ninety, so there would not be a budget for four ninety in fiscal twenty-four. Same thing with the other one, we'll go to five ninety-one.
Okay, so I'm, that's what I was gonna ask, 'cause on the paper we have, it says it's gonna be combined to five ninety.
Yeah.
No, the one that should be five ninety-one.
One's five ninety, five ninety-one.
Yeah, so four ninety-seven on our note, it says five ninety, but it should be five ninety-one then.
That's my, my year.
Yeah, I saw that.
Five ninety-one, sorry.
I wanted to clarify. So do we even need to cover anything in these or do we just move past it?
You'll be seeing a budget of that that can prove.
Yes, yeah, it's all.
Before the end of the year, to me, these ones. Now, if you don't have any questions, are you ready for that?
Yep.
Same thing with four ninety-seven?
Yeah, four ninety-seven is a change of.
You say five forty-one each one building inspection?
I did have some questions on that.
Sure.
So on the, the first page, just going through the different, uh, permit costs or, you know, expected permitting. I was, I was just a little confused. If you look at the electrical line, it goes up a little bit, which roughly, on average, a permit cost would be like fourteen permits. But then you go to the heating and cooling and it looks like that's increasing what is it, by, from where, currently is by fifteen thousand. So, yeah, from where the, uh, the active is. I'm just trying to figure out why we're expecting from where we're actively budget is right now, only going up four thousand in electrical, fifteen thousand in heating and cooling, are those permits a lot more expensive?
Uh, no, the heating and cooling permits, those are mechanical permits.
Yeah.
But the electrical, I mean, with the, I don't know if this has to do with the marijuana industry that's coming in, those are a lot.
Well, I know, I get that, I mean, if they're going, if they're doing grows and stuff, which doesn't look like they're doing a lot of grows, but I don't, just saying, 'cause the annexation of the properties. You're only, you're basically including enough for like fourteen more permits in electrical, based on where we're currently at. I mean, if you're, if you go off the projected for this year of fourteen-four and you're only saying you're gonna go up to fifteen next year, at six hundred dollars, that's roughly what, three permits?
Probably, I mean, we can project that a little larger than.
No, I just didn't know what, what we were expecting to go up by, I'm just looking at the actuals, the active. Where we currently are, and we're pretty close to the end of the year, I don't know how many more permits we're gonna.
From this year. You know, and we do need to keep in mind, there is the possibility, um, within the next budget year, um, if the property, a prospect gets developed, if powers gets developed, we have over twenty residents being built.
Yeah.
I, I, I would think this would, if that is actually the case and happens in the year, if you have.
Maybe so, it goes more permits, it's not gonna really.
Right. We need to at least, if this was insanely over, then that, that's a bigger concern than if it was under.
Well, this is our projected revenue.
Yeah.
So this is projected of how many, like, as residential's slowing down or industrial's kicking up at the, at the time. You know, the middle, uh, middle school property is a bit of a enigma for us right now.
Yeah, doesn't, doesn't it?
So, but as our projected revenues, I mean, obviously if we go over, that's obviously a bonus.
Yeah, I just didn't, I guess, just the difference between the electrical and the and the mechanical heating permits, just, we're gonna, up fifteen thousand in one and roughly four.
Well, I guess if you go back a little farther to twenty-one, twenty-two, those are solid numbers that, that we know. Um, so it's not really too far off. Because we based this year off of those and then building forward.
We need to change the rates for those permits?
Not on the trade permits, but other permits. We did change a little bit last year and we're looking to do that again.
And they really are, by the time we take in everybody's time, um, just to get it clear forward on top of the inspections and everything. It, it hardly, I mean, it really squeaks by covering the necessaries.
And we're still probably one of the lesser municipalities around the church.
We've talked about possible, um, pre-planning prices.
Yes, pre-planning.
Or pre-planning, especially, um, pre-planning for those who don't own property yet, um, versus pre-planning for those who do, different prices there. Um, so we're gonna hold team together to pre-plan for a possible project and then given their planning, they might not step forward. We just had seven hours, if that was a one-hour meeting, we had seven of our people, different people there.
It doesn't.
So, um, we've talked about looking into that going forward, but that's a different topic. So would you like to see the suggestion, are you happy with this, what would you suggest?
I just was looking for an explanation on the difference between, let's see, that's all.
Fine, listen.
Yeah, I'm comfortable, given that twenty-one, twenty-two, we have hard numbers. Um, and given that we have the possibility of, um, different builds this year, but I think we'll hit our numbers.
Uh, the next page with the, the contracted service. I, I'm assuming that's a note below it, I just didn't know what, what that meant.
Say that one more time.
Contracted service, there's nothing budgeted.
Right, it was, and underneath is your note saying the planners contracted services will be in the general fund under planning commission. So that budget will be moving over to planning commission.
So just like the other two.
Oh, I see, so that's just getting pulled off.
It's just changing, but, um.
All right, I just didn't understand the note, sorry.
Because she's more associated with the planning commission reviews.
And we have talked about, we did only approve that for a six-month trial basis, we are gonna be, we are looking back at that soon in council meeting, just to.
Probably, you did, so, dead soon.
End of July, she's.
Anything else on? Here?
No, no.
Let's move on, now we're to five ninety. And this water system. Okay, we only have the one note on here, um, new rate study, decrease for residents, increase for businesses, and additional hundred and fifty from fund four ninety.
So that's what we're just talking about?
Any questions?
The Bruce revenues, I suppose, I mean, you got about here, it's pretty stable. Aren't they tending to, to go up a little bit or? Don't they have more, more and more usage? I guess we haven't been down to a certain, uh, don't we?
Outside of their two hundred and fifty thousand. Those don't get calculated.
For maintenance and.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I guess that's pretty much, okay.
Well, given that chemicals and a few things will be going up, it will go up in accordance of percentage, but how did we?
How did we get the two oh six? Um, on the
Suge treatment.
Oh, why wasn't, um, what was that amended budget?
I was under the impression that the Bruce contract was fifty-eight thousand quarter and amended it as a true-up.
That is correct, yes.
So why would we only plan at a hundred and fifty thousand?
Uh, correct, it should not be, it should be up. Two fifty plus the true-up.
Two hundred plus the true-up.
Two fifty.
Sorry, I didn't.
Two hundred, I'm sorry, yeah.
What I have a question, why there was only a hundred and fifty in twenty-one, twenty-two? 'Cause that's only three quarters, right, and we're supposed to even out?
Unless there was an overage and it was made up for at the end, I don't know.
Or it was paid early in twenty-one.
Okay.
Then it might just be the last three quarters in twenty-two.
Sometimes that's.
Good.
And so we got to the two oh six?
The two, the six thousand dollars would be the true-up. It's two hundred plus. Assuming it go over, go over.
So we wanna see the projected of twenty-two, twenty-three at two hundred instead, is that what we're saying?
Do you have the numbers from the year prior to twenty-one, twenty-two?
Um, not.
Well, and only so much was available for Julie, um, and the team given prior ways that information was saved, stored.
I'm not an expert on your sewer system, I'm just doing the same project for, uh, Bruce, that's a K S R student review. So I just happened to know that in the last week or so.
What is the contribution revenue that we saw in twenty-one that we're not seeing?
That is likely water lines from the new development, a new building. They've, the contractor puts it in and then grants it to you after.
Or is that also because we lost some Washington township?
Sorry, I don't follow.
We did.
Some of the users in Washington township went out of Washington.
Okay.
Like from the church south.
Yeah, Barbara Ann and, um.
Across the frontier town. Across the front, you're talking.
Yeah, different, yeah, when they redid the streets, the users are no longer.
They're off our system now.
So you gotta change the hundred and fifty to two hundred?
Yes, that should be adjusted, and then a further amendment, once we do the true-up, that's how we're gonna, yeah, that, towards the real end of the budget here.
I would know those on the next page for you, between, um, DPW and the wastewater expenditures. Did you have any questions on?
I don't have a question, I don't want you.
No, I'm wondering. Okay, then you had, we'll follow the third page.
I did have a couple of questions on this, and I don't know if this was something that Al put together, or if you, you know. So I was looking at, like, the sledge disposal line.
Yes.
We started at forty-nine this year, and we're gonna, we're projecting down at seventy-five.
Is that the account, to account for any of the rate increases? I'm missing.
Pretty common. Unless, um, disposal, the price went up possibly, or we are.
Yeah, that I'm not aware of, because from the conversation, we did have with Al.
No.
But we can revisit that.
We're, we're at sixty in twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yeah, so I saw we're at sixty the year before, we're only, budgeting at forty, forty-nine, we're at forty-five, we're, say, we're at seventy-five.
That's not what, he didn't mention that one was gonna go up. He mentioned certain chemicals, and you, you didn't know the specific ones.
And it's fifteen thousand, I don't know if we're gonna see another increase like that, because we're only showing a three thousand dollar increase for this next year.
That one can be adjusted, or we'll just verify with Al before we make the final adjustment.
Yeah, if we go down to repair, maintenance, equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty-one and forty, we're already at sixty-one, projecting sixty-five by the end of the year, and we're back down, we're projecting thirty-six.
Well, the thirty-six was based on Al's recommendation, actually. Um, he did have all these numbers in front of him, but that's straight from Al, so we can.
That's lower than where we were in twenty-one, twenty-two, so.
Here's something we don't, yeah.
With repair, maintenance?
There's something major.
Repair, maintenance of equipment, yeah.
Is that, maybe, because we got the new truck and the.
Well, the trucks are at DPW, this is on Al's. Um, we are, yeah, that came straight from Al.
Well, I'm not quite sure, capital outlay, I'll separate, but he, um, he had not been getting his budgets, so he wasn't quite sure what he was in, not, in being very conservative in spending and, um, maintaining. So my thought is that this year, he just didn't repair as he would have known, been being confident in his, um, numbers. And that, which then leaves more to be done in the next year.
I should, last, he's already, you know, he's almost gonna double what we budgeted for this year. So I, I just, I don't know, if you could just ask him.
Sure.
For a note on that.
What does it have to do with the recent?
We trust him, yeah, make sure he's open to something, you know.
Some of the purchases.
Yeah, because we just recently did one at this meeting, and then you did one at a month or so before. And I know there's, um, he has another request coming up.
We'd be in a better position to plan more, though, for that stuff.
Yeah.
Not that you can put your finger on what it's going to be, but.
You can plan on, you know, this thing's only good for ten years, and we're planning on replacing it, you know, eight years, ten years.
So rather than budget thirty-six, and have to spend, you know, close to sixty-five, rather than budget for something.
Seven years, spend, yeah, spend thirty-six, exactly, right?
Yeah.
Go the reverse.
Where are you at, I'm seeing fifty.
What's that?
Five ninety, oh, okay, that's fine, that was the other one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we dress up. And back to the proverbial telephone. We are not going up to fifteen thousand, right, we're gonna. No, that should be, their phone system's already been updated, so there's no reason why we should be giving AT&T bills anymore.
All right, because it, it's creepy, it's, you know.
Sorry, twelve.
Their phone bill's like three hundred dollars a month right now.
I don't think we readdressed it with Julie after.
Oh, correct, right, because we're in motion right now with the eighteen. Slash, the cheese is out of all this.
Do you want that, and you were just informed of?
Yeah, I'm sorry, where is it at right now?
So the telephone is at fifteen thousand, recommended for twenty-three, twenty-four, did you want me to reduce it?
Yeah, conservatively, can we just for now put it down to eight?
And just so you know, um.
Because I think there's still some live lines that are not being utilized that will be shut off.
The conversation with that bill that we had, we're holding tight on, so that's not going to be expected.
What is water? So on the capital outlay on this, are we waiting for name?
Okay.
We're waiting for name, I think.
Okay, I mean, do you want to?
Okay, this one, so we'll move forward then. Capital outlay, outlay. There's a request in here from Tim, for.
That just sustained, Ken goes along with your, is that?
Yeah, so, Tim asked me for sewer camera, and since we're in sewer finance, where it would go.
These are just.
Oh, gotcha, so it'll be from the sewer, okay.
Mm-hmm.
These are just requests, and you'll see where it all, um, how it all ends up, so it doesn't, it can be a planned request, that we go, okay, in two years, and we'll plan it this way. That's why we have our projected planners out, we can, we can plan it that way, you can say, um.
Do we currently have a camera, or?
Yeah, I think we did.
I think we do, but he's looking for a new one, to replace it.
Okay, gotcha.
Because that is a service we do offer right now.
Did he get three bids, or is he just kind of confident it'll be in that range?
I know he did look at pricing, so, yeah, he's pretty confident it'll be in that range. He pretty much always has his estimates.
That would request a hundred K.
And, yeah, even after the Sogar, that's not, nothing that we, he will pay for.
Al's hundred, was the hundred for, um, the parking lot, was that one?
Well, we have at this time an undetermined amount, but he was willing to do it in phases over three years.
So what specifically is a hundred, just says capital outlay, is that for his?
Oh, yeah, that was probably because we based it on, over three years, based on the, um, price that DPW was gonna pay for apartment, so I think that's where we got the hundred thousand.
So repair fund for the building?
Mm-hmm. Was that fifty-one thousand, per Al's request?
I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Fifty-one thousand, and that was at Al's request.
Is the building in bad shape, or does it really take that much to?
It's old.
Very old, and you know they're trying to do updates right now to it, um.
It is, would that fifty-one then be, would a portion of that be given to Bruce for their, their portion of the maintenance? Or is that fifty-one, and then Bruce puts their percentage on top of that?
Brian or Julie can answer that.
You mean, so you get to charge Bruce a share of your maintenance?
Yeah.
So this would be your gross cost, what you are willing to pay, and then that could be part of the six thousand or any other number that goes on top of the two hundred, and then they will.
And it's recouped in a percentage, like, it's all.
So. On each sheet, I'm just trying to go back and forth between the budget and the sheet. He's got line seven forty-five, chemicals, he's saying an increase of ten thousand. We look at seven forty-five on the budget, and it's going from, we're projecting eight this year, and it's only going to ten? If he's saying there's gonna be increase?
Two ten.
Well, two ten, not, okay, alright, two ten, okay. I was playing tricks.
And that's why I get out my paper and have to.
Increase to forty-five, that's.
And how about the uniforms, where it says need to near DPW?
Correct, because there wasn't any, I know, any amount budgeted for this year, so we have to make sure it's in there for next year.
Yeah.
And they have the same uniforms, the same amounts down.
Okay, so that's not listed in area?
I don't think so.
So would you just propose the same?
Yeah, I believe it's around eleven, fourteen in here, fourteen thousand, I think.
We budgeted for it in the past, it just somehow got, I'm sorry, we budgeted for it in the past, so we could go back and look at those hard numbers. It just, for some reason, was missed, okay, this year.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's okay.
Yeah, it's nothing new for wastewater, so.
Okay.
I'm sure the line item went next year.
We're good here with the wastewater, if you want to run some questions?
Do you ever think we go up, we go up, for those, ever so often, how's that work?
Currently, we are in two contracts.
Correct, the other one is the Sogar, we're contracted still twenty-five, I think, centas.
With centas, but we also have, um, one.
Yeah, that's the, that's it.
What's that mean? Okay. What is two contracts? We have two different.
Well, one was doing uniforms, one was doing some floor mats, and it just didn't work out as a cost-saving effort, so we're just going back to centas.
So we're not paying the other company?
Right.
Are we paying two companies for the same thing?
No. No, 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 no.
Moving into our water fund?
Water.
We have one note here, um, any other questions or concerns?
Um, this note is, um, based on the water rate study that we did, not two hundred, like, revenue.
Yeah, which, we have to get John to redo all the numbers based off of the new table we just did.
All the new tables, right.
Granted, this point, that we all need to come to the same numbers, so it's our, based off of that.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't not fluctuate? But I don't know that it reflects, that he knows the exact amount of users we have for five eights or three quarters and such.
Chris can get us that.
I wouldn't, why are we projecting less water meter sales if we've already done ninety-six this year? And we're, we're budgeting for five, that's only twenty-five in twenty-one, but if that does go into effect, I wouldn't expect to see more people saying, I'm going to one inch.
Why do we have so many more water meters going in all of a sudden?
I, why do we, so based off of the new rates, the way in, in the meter fees, we're not gonna want to change the meter to hit a lower meter.
Possibly, yeah.
And we have the broken ones that we wanted to change up first.
Yeah, there's a couple hundred that are not working, that need to be, um, changed out. Some of them, maybe they're, they don't need to, they can do a repair, they might not need to purchase a new one, but we would need to get in to look at it, to see if it's repaired versus replaced. And that's kind of where, with their whole, the concern with the residents, I completely understand where they're coming from, and it would really relieve the burden on the residents of, um, those who have, for, to your case, a one-inch, you want to go back to three-quarter. There is the purchase of the three-quarter inch meter, which is one seventy-five, and then you have a hundred dollars in permits and fees. So you're at three hundred dollars, three seventy-five, for just to come into the office and get it done, and then you have to go play, get the plumber. I don't know how much it costs.
Those guys are outrageous.
So to, to figure out how to do these costs differently from the fixed cost, moving from the meter, really would relieve a lot of that burden on the resident of having to switch, in order to get the lower meter rate, having to go through that whole rigmarole of switching out their meter. So I, I am definitely curious to hear how John would propose the other way to do it. And then we wouldn't have to have all this servicing of changing out the meters, um, residents contacting plumbers to get their lines changed, and, um, and then the only ones who would be purchasing meters at that point would be, um, broken, non-working, those who want irrigation.
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't think I heard the answer, why did we drop the meter sales to five thousand? I can't answer the question, it should go up, or it's, it seems like that should double.
Um, well, like I said, we were just basing it on just the broken ones, we, I think we were gonna replace, we didn't realize at the time that everybody was gonna say, I don't like the size of my meter, so I'm not paying for it.
Well, I was even thinking, like, seven, you know, if something happens on Prospect Street, that's potentially.
Well, but again, at the time, when we were doing all these projections, nothing was communicated, so that's, we can adjust that.
And, and why did we drop tampon fees? It got dropped out here, does that move somewhere else?
Oh, definitely.
There must have.
Not necessarily, unless you know that there is a new development that is gonna have to tampon the system. It, it's not like they just show up, right, you'd have to have it in the neighborhood or whatever going in.
Yeah, again, at the time, with these projections.
We currently have none, because today.
Right, yeah, I mean, Al knows, Spain, he already has everything.
Okay.
I don't think I want to change it, I want to keep it.
Okay, um, moving on to the second page of, we all done with that one? Here we have our salaries, our uniforms.
This should all be pretty standard increases.
Are coming from you. And we have our iron removal plant over at First Street.
So this is the uniform laundry and cleaning is in here.
Yeah, it's in here for DPW.
It was in for DPW, it got missed for waste.
It can go, pardon me.
It was last year.
Where?
It was, um. Well, shipment is eleven five ninety, nine two nine seven two one.
Okay, it is Julie's.
One five ninety.
It is, it's of.
One five ninety.
So that's why it's blank today.
Blank. Is there a projected number?
Certainly, we've got nothing in the active or projected for this year, on that line.
Said for five ninety? Ninety-one is where it is, you're at five ninety-one?
Yeah.
Under that, wait, you're looking at, under the iron removal, right?
Oh, I see.
That's why IRP is DPW, so.
But then we're adding a thousand, are we just spreading it out then over the different funds that DPW associates with, for the uniform?
Probably, um, allocate it for all the users.
Our phone bill, yeah, it's gonna break.
Correct, yes, we are in the process of that one right now, is changing over to the much more cost-effective, user-friendly phone lines. That should be just called the first of May, um, actually, Verizon calling at my house today, it's like, what's, I'm like, yeah, let's, let's do it. And answer all their questions and get that in motion.
Do you want me to reuse the telephone?
Yes.
Further, so is it thirteen thousand for next year?
DPW go down to only six.
Six?
Yeah, maybe fingers crossed, supporting over goes.
Well, twenty-one, that was one forty-seven, how the heck did it just come out like that?
Because there's only two phone lines over there, and one's technically this, um, alarm. And, yeah, we're trying to get AT&T out of there, so Verizon will be like twenty-nine dollars a month for them. They're way more cost-effective.
Okay, and we're moving into the third page. There's a note under the capital outline, the wellhouse, this one I would like to see for sure put in there, this needs to you can't just build a wellhouse anymore, you have to have
Engineering.
New drawings and such, so that's why it's a little more expensive than just going to.
Right.
I mean, they know how to do it, they could just have done it, they've done it in the past, however, there's new regulations, so here we go. So that is one that I would definitely say we would need to get in there. Where are we at with our van? The current van is what year?
Oh shoot, I don't know the year, we're just concerned because it's got a little rust on it. I don't know of any other complications with it, but the year escapes me. But they priced it out at seventy-five thousand dollars.
So there could be something we can be working in. Their parking lot driveway is a disaster, but at this point, I feel like it should just be dirt. But that is a high-deep price tag. I see that one being a multi-year planned.
Could go back up to repair and maintenance of meters. Questions on that one? I know, we were talking about meter sales before, but you said we got a lot of meters that need to be replaced because they are broken or need repair. Currently, we're at thirty thousand, and that dropped down to twenty for next year? If we think we're going to have more repairs needed, shouldn't that at least maintain this year's number?
Is this expenditure or revenue? Revenue expenditure?
Spenditure. Five nine one five two eight nine three four.
Because I think repairing a meter, that's on us, right? If it's a new meter, they buy it, but if it's damaged, then we have to fix it. So I can't see that going down if we've got a hundred meters that need to be repaired right now.
Was that our twelve dollar maintenance fee that we were collecting? That we no longer aren't going to be collecting, because of the new rates?
I wouldn't say it that way. I feel like it's still large, it's just in there somewhere.
Right, oh.
This is an expense.
The structure, rate structure, sorry.
Yeah, that's how the residents.
Did you finish with something?
This is an expense, this isn't the twelve coming in, this is what we got going down.
Oh, expenditure, sorry. Okay, we can look into that.
Yeah, I mean, activity to date is at thirty. And they have definitely been doing a big push.
Yeah.
They've had a lot, I don't know exactly, but they've had a big push, that's why we're kind of out of meters, because a lot of the people are seeing everything, okay, let's keep them fixed.
Do you know how many meters we've repaired this year?
I don't know.
I guess if you look at that, how many were repaired, how many were still, no need to be repaired, and face the number on that.
Well, it's hard to say, because if you have a broken meter that needs repair, then your water bill was minimum. You weren't getting assessed carefully, so nobody was really calling for repairs. So now that the new rate structure, if you have a broken meter, you're being assessed differently, you're paying a different fee, that is going to really kick into here, getting the meters fixed, and then your costs will go down. A lot of people were excited, I think, to have a broken meter, because then you were, they can use as much water as they want.
But then, but if we're having a big push to get that done, then we have to repair maintenance, this should be going, we need to bring that up. If our projected for this year was thirty-two, and we're already at thirty, I can see us meeting or exceeding.
Okay.
That'd be my assumption.
Okay, yep, that makes sense.
I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the telephone bill. And these folks, I think, are the winners here for their telephone bill, that is the highest number we're seeing. So forty thousand, yeah.
How projected?
Yeah, that's, that's the one I think that we were in dispute with, with.
Yeah, but hey, they're ten thousand.
The attorney.
The what? I said, but hey, they're ten thousand.
The pages are out.
Yeah.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I'll be excited to see that.
Save twenty there and put that under the repair meters.
I know.
That's just crap.
Isn't it insane?
But they just ran fiber lines through the village.
Okay, so we'll adjust those two accordingly. Anything else?
So, you know, one quick, with this, the wellhouse that needs to be built, why wasn't that done when the well went in, or why wasn't that put into that project?
Because I think the completion of the actual well took longer.
I'm not sure the whole scope of, the whole, the whole project was thought about. As much as it was an emergency, we need to get this done, we need to get the well done.
And then it took, what, like a year or two to get it?
We had, we got stretched out.
Do it again, the first one did.
Yeah.
Is this the law First Street there?
Yeah, this was, you guys approved this, I think, in beginning of twenty, middle of twenty, I think. It was before I was on.
And I don't know if regulations, maybe the regulations changed in that amount of time, that they couldn't just build a wellhouse, they needed to then go get engineer jobs, I don't know. When that was known.
Still would have thought that something would have been included in that project for that, because we needed to engineer to have.
Yeah. Old wood was also a different prospect then, too. Okay. Anything else, any comments, concerns? Well, then I guess.
You got anything?
Yes, I do, but it doesn't have to do with this budget. I called the builder's office today to ask what time of the evening was, they said seven o'clock. I came in here before seven. What I want to know is, I must have missed something. What is option two? I want to know how much my water bill is going to be, so that I don't have the inventory line comes.
Well, the meter rate that we just did went to one inch, or three twenty?
I think we're one inch, I mean.
So that would be the one twelve fifty?
I can't see you having a one inch.
Well, that's what they claim, they claim complex is one inch.
You've got one inch probably coming in, I, I don't want to say a doubt, maybe Nolan would know more than that.
I mean, that's what the DPW, I mean, the water people told us.
Yeah, the main component is probably one inch, but it's probably a three-quarter meter is what I would assume.
No, all the condo complexes in the Village of Romeo, all have one-inch meters for each individual dwelling.
Wow.
That's insane.
That is insane. That's a, that's a lot of water.
That's a lot of water.
Beautiful, a lot of water.
If a lot of water, then it's going to be a lot of money, if these rates stay in place.
Don't let the pipes get rid of stuff over there for the years sometimes.
Do you have the, what's the other meter fixed cost?
This was a better of the two options that we presented for.
So I didn't hear the options, so what were the options?
Right here.
I can't read them.
Okay, so, a one-inch meter is a hundred and twelve fifty.
That's.
Or sixty-seven, seventy-seven.
That's a flat fee.
Right, and this, this is just for sewer, and then I'm trying to recall what the other fixed costs, because they don't have my July or.
Because now we pay if we're ten thousand or less, forever, for at least the last year and a half, we pay a hundred and sixty-eight forty. And back in July, when the study was done, we were told thirty-four dollar decrease.
They should never told you that.
Well, you were here, you all voted on it.
Can I see your flyer? I'm trying to figure that out.
Sure.
What's your normal usage?
Well, this one was four, four thousand, and then it jumped to eight thousand. So I'm saying ten or less, because that's what the one sixty-eight forty was based on. Ten thousand gallons or less. And we don't take in laundry, I don't think anybody does there. And the, and the irrigation is totally separate from my individual water bill. I have to, I probably have to kick in when I pay my condo fee for the irrigation, that has nothing to do with this. This will be what comes on a bill similarly for that. Yeah, there, there, nobody down there that I know of.
This is just.
Right.
This is both.
No.
Oh.
Because they were okay with these, I mean, there was very valid, also. Do you know how many gallons we use?
No, no, I just told them. Of the period before this last one, this page of water bill, I was only at four thousand. I jumped to eight thousand, because another thing is, is it's flat. Nobody, you can't tell me that eighty-eight people down there all used an even number of gallons, but everybody's gallons are in the thousands, okay? So, but now, since this came up, uh, I'm, I'm wetting my toothbrush. Off goes the water. Uh, washing my hair, wet it down, off goes the water. This is unaffordable. Three hundred bucks, that's a hundred bucks a month, plus the softener and the salt that goes into the softener. And like I said, everybody's saying, well, it wasn't right in July, but you weren't here, you weren't here, and everybody else was here, and it was a unanimous yes to go ahead with the study.
At that time, that it wasn't going to save the majority of people money.
But you were here when that was said, because the audience asked, what could we expect, thirty to forty dollar in decrease?
Just the sewer.
I mean, you can review it on video.
I thought that was total.
DVD, whatever. I mean, I have no reason to be here, I got better things to do.
This is just sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it didn't address the water of the three-quarters difference there.
If we halt, I know we're out of that meeting already, so I don't know how we go about it, if we put a pause on this again.
Do we have eighteen hours between now and tomorrow's meeting?
Again, it is the, the rates are live, so people calling down for final.
Yeah, they're getting that.
Rates, final water bills for, you know, moving, coming to go in and whatnot, are getting the new rate structure right now. Because it's been turned back on.
Because we made that decision.
Because we're in the next cycle now that it's going to produce the new rate structure.
So what was her new bill going to come to?
Depend, currently, and the six thousand is two thirty-one seventy, and then the ten thousand that she asked, I had two seventy-four fifty in my math.
It's a big one sixty-eight now.
Mine's gonna, yeah, mine, I got a one-inch, sixteen thousand gallons a quarter, it's going to go from like one seventy-something to three, I just did some quick math. It's going to go up to three forty.
And there's a lot of people that aren't even aware.
You got one inch.
Absolutely not aware, that July bill comes, whoop! That's why I said.
You're going to beat us.
Town hall meeting, you know, and, and this, this list, I mean, it would, it would benefit me by having a different meter put in. It would definitely benefit me, even if I had to pay for the meter, even if I had to find my plumbing guy from Patty Anne and Orchard, have him come and do the work. By the time I pay that money per year, it would behoove me to have a different meter put in. But I didn't think, living in the Village of Romeo, that I would ever have to do that unless my meter broke.
Right, and that's what we're saying, given the concerns and everything that we're hearing, it would make sense to change the way the structure is. I would have to have time to ask those questions. We, I had a meeting with the residents today at two.
Yeah, but I think it would be easier to change the, the billing, to change the three-quarter and one inch. It's, it's a vast difference between twenty-two and fifty-five dollars for a quarter of an inch. That would be the lesser of two evils. You wouldn't be dealing with replacing meters. Or coordinating that, or having a stockpile, or whatever. I mean, this is ridiculous. And that technically, as the gentleman said, it's, it's like a twenty-two percent increase in our water rates. If, if you took that south to Washington Township and presented that, they'd go ballistic, they'd blow up the township hall. Twenty-two percent. Horrible.
Can we, can we discuss this at a meeting before a meeting tomorrow? I don't know, we might need to.
I think we do need to.
We might need to pump the brakes on this. Definitely got eighteen hours, I mean, it's only.
As Catherine said, it's already.
It's live.
It's already been going out, when did it, April first?
No, um.
Here, the cycle ended on three fifteen twenty-three.
Which was.
So three sixteen twenty-three.
So it's now, that's when it got turned on?
If you kicked in those new rates, that's when it started.
So residents are already affected by it.
As soon as you pull the plug on it would be very wonderful. You know, the people that get caught up asking for final reading, oh, well. And we have a lot of people in our condo complex that are on fixed income. I mean, Diane's sister moved out, she couldn't afford to live there on the old rates.
We weren't that short on revenues, were we, last year?
Did I have to look?
Thought we needed twenty-two percent?
And that's what we're saying, but when the study was done, things were different, and it does need to be redone. Nothing was ever put in place to redo it from an action like. So at this point, so that was tomorrow. So that reading came to you, the unit to you? No?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, as Chris said that at the beginning of July, they didn't know that.
And we would have had a little bit.
So it would have to be not until end of August, we couldn't figure this out by the May, by, by the June writing.
Correct, yes, they will read them in June.
Which again, negates the whole irrigation option for the year, but if we're willing to kick that down out of the way for, to hold rates, that's where we're at.
So let's, everyone posted, had a special before. It's what we're going to be doing. Or at the end.
Easier at the end.
Yeah, we can't put, we got a post at times, so we'd have to.
That's why it was six fifty, six fifty-five.
I have one more comment, and when the new rates, after the July vote, and the people that were on the council then voted unanimously to support the results of that study and put those rates in effect in the next billing cycle, and when that didn't happen, I came to the meeting and we were still getting the one sixty-eight, we were expecting an increase, and I came and said, when the study, when you got it all figured out, will we get a credit on our bill? And the answer was no. So, if I could read between the lines, that should have been the indication, there was going to be no credit. And we were actually heading for an increase, and then we waited until now, when the new flyer came up. That was our first warning.
Okay.
All right.
Well, we'll put in a special meeting for tomorrow evening, and I'll post it right now.
We have to post it right now, because we're at twenty-three hours.
Okay.
Make a motion to the chairman.
Motion by Parker. Support by Edwards, all in favor.
Aye.
Any votes? And opposed, no votes, eight-point-four.
So will it be discussed again?